All right, we are on the air. It is 6:31. I'll call this meeting of the MSAD District 15, nope, sorry, MSAD 15 School Board Business Meeting to order. We have a forum. Everyone's here. And let's start with the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a few upcoming meetings, because we all inch back.
We have to move together.
Move as one. May 7th, we'll have Facilities Committee meeting at 5:30 at the Dunn School Library, followed by a School Board Business meeting at 6:30 in the Dunn School Cafeteria and Sauce Gym. Just a reminder, that's obviously a change of venue for us. We're going to try out the Dunn School in our experiment for holding meetings in a consistent location that's on district property. So we're just going to give that a try in May, see how it goes. And that's it for upcoming meetings. Any actions relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda? Great. Comments from the audience? No one tonight.
Do not speak at once.
Oh, wow. All right. They must be happy with the work we've been doing. I would hear a motion to accept as printed the minutes of the April 2nd regular business meeting.
So moved.
Second. Did anybody find anything in those?
Nope.
For visiting? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Perfect. New business. We have a few items for tonight, both related to our budget proposal and a warrant article for capital reserve. Before we get into discussion on those two items, though, we're going to start with inviting Dr. Turner to give a little summary or any information she wants us to be considering here at the final hour. And then also, we'd love to hear from Gary, an update from the Finance Committee.
Don't we have to work through the presentation first?
You might as well. It's the whole thing. And I have a feeling, I read through your presentation ahead of time.
Do they cover it?
Be very little to me to follow up with.
We did put together a few slides, which are on the website and are in the packet. So you should be able to see them as well, even if they don't go up here. What does the red light mean? If I press it? I'm going to press it. It's not blinking. It's just, it's just red.
There you go.
Oh, don't touch anything. Okay, got it. Oh my gosh, what is happening? There we go. Internet hasn't been our best friend today. Okay, here we go. So this is, moving forward, our proposed budget. The Finance Committee voted, what feels like about a month ago, but I think it was just last week, on a proposal moving forward. So this proposal at this time is the proposal of the Finance Committee. Just want to be clear about that. But we did put together some information to try to frame it for the rest of the board, recognizing that there have been a lot of conversations that have happened, both in Facilities and in the Finance Committee, and we want to make sure everyone is operating with the same information. So just to touch base again about this process, it's been a long one. We started in November, but we are here, as you see, nearing the end. Tonight is the formal vote of the School Board to move forward with a budget amount. We then have our Town Validation Meeting on the 22nd and the referendum on the 10th. So a couple of things we'll go over. We'll briefly go over the Board foundations. Given that you all have seen it a few times, I won't spend a lot of time on that. We'll talk about that proposed budget from the Finance Committee. We'll talk a little bit about revenue, including, there have been some questions about federal funds, so we wanted to touch on that pretty quickly. There's been a lot of discussion about fund balance and capital reserve, so we'll talk a little bit about that, and then show some estimated tax impacts, and then turn it over to you for discussion. So our budget foundations, just to remind us what we're here for, we're here to achieve the strategic plan. We've built a budget with the intention of achieving these goals. It is aligned with our core beliefs as a school district. It is to accomplish our vision, and most importantly, our mission, which I always like to take the opportunity to remind us, is preparing students for their next step and instilling aspirations through rigorous and relevant educational experiences. So that is what we are trying to accomplish anytime we make a budget proposal. So the proposed budget for FY, for next year, there are a number of assumptions that went into this first round, as you recall, and I'm not going to go through every step of the way, but I will just remind us. Health insurance, we predicted at 12%. It did come in at 13.7%. We have paid family and medical leave, other insurances, basic inflation to consider. When we put all of those together, sorry, we also had some budget neutral changes, just to remind the Board, we are making a few changes in the district that don't have budgetary impacts, but do help us support hopefully achieving that strategic plan and that mission. We had a long list of needs that we felt would help us better meet the needs of students. That included some support within special services, transportation, we've been talking a lot about that, looking to really invest in facilities. I think that was the biggest theme coming out of all of our departments and our schools, was talking about facilities. We have math materials, we need new math materials at the middle school, our current ones are expiring. And then some others. Summer school has been funded out of other funds for a long time, and those funds are now gone. And so if we want to continue it, we would need to put that in the local budget. So when we took all of those maintenance and effort, along with our needs, it was a very big budget. So we looked at making some reductions and deprioritizations. That is what you're seeing in the budget that's being brought forward to you tonight. That includes a reduction of five ed tech positions based on need. We think we can still meet the needs of an IEPs with five fewer. Delaying, increasing ed tech hour, increase in hours, moving around where we are paying for some different things, reducing 1.5 teachers at the secondary level. At this time, we are planning that to be in world language and music. The other one I was remembering that fell off our slide at some point along the way, we're also doing a reduction to secondary secretary support. We have a retirement, so we're going to reshuffle things around a little bit and not fill that position. We're not going to be bringing forward summer school. Instead of buying the buses and vans we need, looking at a replacement cycle with a three-year leasing. We're going to defer the purchase of the bus lift potentially. And then some other reductions, the SRO is going to cost us less in the coming school year than it did in the current school year, because last year we bought a vehicle. Next year, we don't have to. We also looked at it line by line by line by line across the entire budget, across two years of spending, and made additional reductions where we could tuition, which means, you know, people taking courses, taking that benefit, is one of those places we reduced, because we felt like we could, based on the history of spending. But then there were lots of other sort of little lines in there we reduced throughout. And then the sort of new, the new news, recommendation that's before you tonight is to allocate $800,000 of capital reserve for use. One of those uses recommended by the Finance Committee is to use $275,000 towards air quality bond payments. It's not the full amount of the payment, it's a partial amount of the payment. And so that has come out of the expense proposal that you'll see tonight. So these were our various iterations. As a reminder, we started at 6.52% increase, would have been just maintenance of effort if we changed nothing. 10.96% would have been the increase if we had moved forward with maintenance effort and all of the things we felt we needed. Once we took out the reductions and the deprioritizations, working with the Finance Committee, the proposal that's in front of you now is a 5.99% increase. A note on health insurance. So we budgeted health insurance at 12%, as you may recall. It came in last week at 13.7%. That's about $80,000 more than what we budgeted. But we are going to move forward in this budget process with our original proposal without increasing that $80,000. We think we have some options within the greater budget that might save us some money here and there, that we think we probably can absorb, but we'll probably be okay, without coming back and saying, okay, we actually need more money in this budget proposal. So we spent a little while wrestling with it, but we think leaving health insurance, as we proposed it, even though our percent came in a little higher, is a gamble worth making. One of them is, we are exploring some private options for paid family medical leave. That could potentially save our district, I said 100, up to $100,000. It's really probably closer to $70,000 or $80,000 in the coming school year, as we're getting more and more details. That is something that will have to come to the Board for approval. So if we, once we get more information, and if we decide it is something we should pursue, you can anticipate at the May 7th meeting, we will be here asking you to support that. We also think our dental insurance may come in a little bit lower than budgeted. And so we think we should be okay without adding that extra 1.7% for health insurance to the budget. So that leaves us at $35,405,316. That's a $2,528 or 5.99% increase over last year, this current year to next year. Please keep in mind, that number includes adult education. And that's where budgets get a little funny sometimes, because the way the articles play out, oftentimes when we're looking at numbers, we're looking at it without adult education. I thought it was really important that we were talking about the entirety of the increase, particularly given we are asking for an additional investment of about $25,000 in adult ed for next year. So that is, so 5.99 includes adult education. So how that breaks out, as far as where those, where the 5.99 plays out, 3.1% of that is salary changes. So that is our contractual increases, keeping in mind that we also reduced positions, so that comes out of it. So even after we take out positions, it adds about 3.1% of the total. The health insurance is about 1.74% of that 5.99. Adult ed is 0.08%, so it's just a very tiny bit. The air quality bond is now 0.3% of the increase, if we move that 275 to capital reserve. And addressing the needs that we identify is 0.77% of that 5.99. So without adult education, if we take that out, the number's a little bit different, and the increase is 5.93%. Why that's important is, without adult education is how the number has been presented to you most of the time over the last number of years. So when you look at it in this budget increase history, if I were to put 5.99 into this graph, it would not be accurate, because all of these other numbers refer to a without adult education number. So 5.93% increase on just the local budget, not including adult education, is lower than the last two years consecutively, and it brings our average over the 10 years listed here to 3.92% per year. Where that plays out in our region, which again, regional data generally is supplied as without adult education in the number, so that's the number I've used to compare us to where everyone else is standing. RSU 16, I put an asterisk on that. They've done a lot of work on this, and I'm just not quite sure what their new number is. So please keep in mind that 7.9, I suspect, is lower than that, but I just haven't seen their new number recently. If you've been following this data over time from where we started, I think you'd see that all those percentages are kind of coming down a little bit, but we still are standing kind of right with our neighbors, if not lower than most of our neighbors. I'll point out again, RSU 14, you know, looks like a very large increase. A significant amount of that is their bond for their brand-new middle school. So it can be a little, that's starting to come on. That's what it looks like when you build new schools. And then we've included the population, so you can get an idea of, you know, how big these schools are compared to us, what their proposed percent increase is for the coming year, and then what that is in dollars, because I think it's easy to say, you know, oh, well, Falmouth was 5.97. Yep, they were pretty close to us, but theirs is a million more, because their budget started out a lot bigger. So 5.97 in Falmouth looks a lot different than 5.97 here or in other districts. So I provided the data both ways for people who are interested. Moving on to revenue, this has not changed. This is our proposed ED 279. It should hopefully be about a $360,000, a little bit more increase, over the current school year. The other revenue influences, we still are proposing elimination of pay-to-play. That's going to reduce revenue by about $15,000. We are reducing tuition, just out of a guess. Increase in bank interest potentially. And then the big sort of new news is, in discussion with the Finance Committee, they are recommending that we use 1.25 million of carryover or fund balance towards FY '26 revenue. So now we'll get into a note. I wasn't, there wasn't a great place to stick this in, so I stuck it in here. A little bit of note about federal funds. I know folks have had a lot of questions about federal funds. I know there's a lot in the news. It can be, there even was news today. We're still figuring out what that means. We receive federal funds for a couple of things. So the first line you'll see here is called the ESEA, or it's also known as Title Grant Funding. We receive, you know, 400 to around $400,000 in funding for that. That funds response to intervention supports at our three elementary schools. We also receive federal money through the Individuals with Disabilities Act, or IDEA, that's to support implementation of IEPs. That's usually a little under $600,000 per year. And then we also receive school nutrition funds through the USDA. That was just under $400,000 in FY '24. The thing with USDA, what's different about school nutrition, the Title Grants and IDEA, they tell us, usually about this time each year, you're going to get this amount of money next year. And then we have to put in a proposal what we're going to do with it, and get approved, and it's a whole process. With school nutrition, there is a reimbursement rate for use. So they don't get an allocation that says, this is how much you will get next year. We get reimbursed based on how many kids eat. So, you know, we have monthly reports that we're putting in that say, this many kids had meals. We then get reimbursed at a specific rate for that amount. So we couldn't really say what our FY '25 allocation is, because there's not an allocation, but we anticipate the amount we will receive back from them is fairly similar. So a couple of notes. So at this time, and this morning may have changed it, but as of right now, I don't think there's an injunction, but keep in mind, I haven't watched the news in the last hour, so please don't come at me if I'm wrong about that. This is a situation that is changing by the hour. At this time, there's been no actions to limit or prevent us from accessing our federal funds. That may change. But as of right now, nothing has happened. We, and federal funds are a reimbursement model. So we are given our allocation, we do a proposal, the state approves it, we then go about our activities, and once a month, give or take, depending on how the system's working, we go in and we bill the state for what we spent in the last month. So in the case of Title Grants, when we're talking about RTI staff, or Response to Intervention staff, we're taking all the salary and benefits information, we're putting together a report, we're saying, hey, you owe us this amount. They then reimburse us for that money. The state then turns around and is reimbursed from the federal government. So as of right now, we are fairly up to date with our billing. If that were to be cut off, we, in the current year, would probably be okay, because we don't have that much of the year left. And we, as I said, we stay up to date in our reimbursement, so we already have a good amount of this allocation for the current year. But we don't know. We just don't know what's going to happen. If this were to move forward, and we were to lose access to federal funds, and it was going to be for a lengthy period of time, we would probably have to come back to the Board and either talk about using some of our reserve funds to support the work that we fund with this money, or talk about eliminating programs, eliminating staff, that sort of thing. So we're hoping that everyone can come to a nice resolution, and the money can continue to flow in to our district. Another note I want to make about this is, I know that on the news this morning was a school district that has kind of gone forward with making some local rule changes. And, you know, the Board can kind of talk in long term, whether that's something they're interested in doing or not, but a caveat I give to you is, that doesn't change whether we have access to federal funds or not, because it is a reimbursement model through the state. So the state has to work with the federal government, and they need to solve their problems. There is nothing that we can do at this local level that is going to change that. So even if we were to move forward and try to change things, we still don't get access to our money if the state weren't to have access to the money. It's between the state and the feds. We have to kind of just wait and see what happens. So that's where we are right now. I really encourage, what we're being encouraged from our professional associations is just to kind of stay calm, you know, wait, watch, read, keep an eye on what's happening. And that's what we're going to just keep doing. I tell people, we're going to focus on teaching kids, because that's what we do. So we're going to keep focusing on teaching kids, and we'll let what's going to happen with federal funds play out. And as soon as I know something actionable, I will make sure that I inform the Board, as well as the greater community, about what our plan is. But that brings us to a really important conversation, which is about our fund balance and capital reserve. As I presented in the past, but I'm going to do it again, because the questions come up a lot, so I'd love to just spend a few minutes on it. There are three pools in our fund balance. Total, and it does total 7.1 million. We have committed, assigned, and unassigned. I'm going to stress again, this is a draft balance as of June 30 of 2024. Until we have a validated and completed audit, which is so close right now, that number is considered a draft. So that's why we are reporting as of June 30, 2024. That's important for a couple of reasons. So the first is that this draft unassigned, which is a little over 2.3 million, these are funds that we have for general purpose, and it serves as the operating funds in the event of emergency. So if payments were to stop into the school district or be delayed for some reason, either from either of the towns, or from the state, or from our reimbursement model, as we said, you know, with the state-federal funds, it's a reimbursement model, that 2.3 million is our cushion to be able to absorb delays in our income coming in. Our payrolls during the school year are about $800,000. So it's important that if there were to be a delay in any of our income coming in, that we are still able to make payroll, and that's to the tune of $800,000 every two weeks. There is a statute that limits that this amount of unassigned is 5% or less of last, of the previous year's budget. So we do keep an eye on that as well. The draft assigned is the 2.1 million in the budget. These are funds that are set aside for a specific purpose. In this case, that $1.5 million that the Board approved last year to be part of this current school year's revenue sits in that draft assigned category. So I'll say to you that the 2.1 million is the draft amount, but that was as of June 30. So keep in mind that most of this money is actually already spent, because the 1.5 million in revenue that was supposed to be this year's operating budget is part of that. And then, whoa. And then the remaining were FY '24 expenses, that we just hadn't been invoiced yet as of June 30, 2024. So we have paid all of those invoices now. It's about, I think, around $600,000 that was paid in July and August. So this 2.1 million sits on our books right now. It sits as, it's considered part of our draft balance, but realistically, those funds have already been spent in the current school year. The third category is draft committed. So that's a little over 2.7 million dollars that have been designated by the Board or by an outside organization by, as being committed for specific purposes. So this includes our capital reserve, so that's something that the Board said, this is money we will use for capital projects. And then the rest are, like, grants or gifts. The Plancen money would be an example. That would sit in our draft committed. It is for a specific purpose. It was given to us for a specific purpose. So those are those funds that are in our fund balance, that we can't necessarily access just for anything. It has, it can only be used for very specific purposes. So capital reserve is one of them. So of the 2.7 million that we have in our draft committed, 2.4 million, a little bit over, is for capital reserve. That is what the Board has put aside over the years for capital use. It is the recommendation of the Finance Committee and a motion on your agenda tonight that we allocate $800,000 of capital reserve for FY '26. The motion of the Board is to allocate $800,000. It is up to the staff what we would then use that for, but this is what we talked about in Facilities, as well as in Finance, of how we would like to use it and how we would intend to use it. $275,000 we would use towards indoor air quality bond payments. We would then use $300,000 of the capital reserve to supplement our general fund capital improvement budget. That is what we proposed originally in the process, to start to kind of bring that local investment in, into the district, increasing it slowly over time. So we would take the $300,000 from our capital reserve, and then add it to the $200,000 that we have in the general fund. We'd have about $500,000 to really attack that need-to-work. And we presented at Facilities what some of those things are. Those are things like, we have a couple of roof that they don't need replacement yet, but they need some attention. And if we could repair them now, we might be able to delay how long it is before we need to replace them again. We've got a couple of boilers that need part of them replaced. So it's really that need-to-work. And then the remaining amount is about $225,000, and we would like to do that for additional school facility planning and projects. Getting towards some of that should do work. Can we start addressing some of those things that we identified in the bond and in our facilities tour, whether that's theater seating or locker, you know, getting new lockers, or, you know, just trying to get it, some of those should do projects, in addition to just our need-to products. So it's $800,000 altogether we are asking you to vote on tonight, and this is how we would propose, that we would then use it. So getting into estimated tax impacts. So you'll now see, this is where that general fund, with and without adult ed, comes into play. Expenses are at the top, which gives us that total of $35 million, with the $2 million change over last year. As you get into the revenue section, you'll see that increase in the ED 279. You'll see that decrease in the fund balance use, because last year we used 1.5 million. This year, we're using, we're suggesting 1.25 million. You'll see that miscellaneous revenue down a little bit. And then that leaves essentially $21,455,988 that we would need as a local contribution in order to run the schools. How that then plays out between the two towns, 66.71% to Gray is $14,312,622. 33.29% to New Gloucester is $7,143,366. The increase, the projected increase, keeping in mind, there are a lot of factors at play here. If you're looking at your average house in Gray, it would be about an increase of about $300 over last year to next year. In New Gloucester, again, on that average house, you're looking at probably just under $250 increase in your annual taxes. So our next steps is for you all to discuss, ask questions, and make decisions, and then we move into town validation and referendum.
All right, thank you. Before we release you from your station there, any questions, just clarifying questions on the material that Dr. Turner presented ahead of discussion?
Going back to the federal best guess, should that money go away and we have to cut programs? We're not talking about necessarily cutting the programs. That money would have fund. Because aren't a lot of those things federal and state mandated, and we don't have any choice but do them anyway?
Yeah, unfortunately. IDEA in particular, and that's our funds to support kids with IEPs. Those IEPs still exist. Our obligation under those IEPs still exist. So we would have to look at cutting something else, because we will have to pay for what those items are.
So we would be looking at actually cutting general instruction to cover those funds. I just think the public needs to understand that that's really what we're talking about. Those federal funds go away. The things that those federal funds paid for, quite often, are mandated. the the things that, things that those federal funds paid for quite often are mandated. So we have to continue to provide them and find the money from the rest of our educational budget.
Yeah, correct. Or our own fund balance or our local taxpayer.
Or we kept to go back and ask for more money, but all I'm saying is, if there are cuts to be made, it won't be in those programs.
Not necessarily, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Um, Gary, did you uh want to weigh in or add any perspective from the finance?
I just wanted, um, Chanda mentioned, in the course of that, all the things we talked about are in there. Largely, the budget was what you're seeing presented tonight, was what was presented at finance um with. Uh, we really had three real decisions to make, and that was around um capital reserve, contribution, fund balance, and what am I missing?
The total budget.
Uh, well, total budget, and then we we had a discussion about whether or not we wanted to put part of capital reserve towards the bond payment. The feeling was that we compromised on the bond payment. In that sense, it was something that was put forward to the to the towns, and they approved it uh in full knowledge that they were gonna have to pay for it at some point. We felt that a compromise was the best we could really do. Uh, but we wanted to find a way to uh contribute to the pain and uh and keep our budget within range. So that's why the two hundred and seventy five thousand was Alex, was proposed to be uh for that. Um, last year we did a million and five for uh fund balance. This year we decided to go one point two five. That was after discussion with our folks in the business office about uh how close to the bone they they felt we could go. Uh, one point five made them really nervous. One point two five felt a little more comfortable. Uh, so that was where we landed on that. The other piece was capital reserve. The finance committee had come forward with a recommendation, or the request recommendation, that we set aside five hundred thousand.
Facilities.
Facilities, I'm sorry, facilities. Um, for for need to must do projects, uh, which seemed more than reasonable, considering what we we had on that list. But at the same time, it didn't really address anything that we had talked about as being important in the bond. And we felt like we needed to have a way to at least get started on some of those projects um that fell outside of the have to do right this minute. Because just because the bonds failed doesn't mean the projects don't need to be addressed. So that was where that eight hundred thousand dollar number came from. Apart from that, there was a unanimous vote to move this budget, as you're seeing it tonight, forward to the to the school board for approval.
This is just a clarifying question on the numbers. I admit that sometimes spreadsheets uh can be turned around. But so the, with the adult ed, the expense increase is two million, five hundred and twenty eight dollars, right?
Correct.
And then we're getting three hundred and sixty K more than last time from the state. And we are rolling over and doing miscellaneous revenue, two hundred and fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen less. Right? So our net should be slightly more revenue, right? Because three hundred and sixty minus two fifty nine, I should still have like a hundred K extra revenue from last time, right? Am I reading that right?
You're saying numbers aren't numbering?
Well, so I'm just saying that if the expense goes up by two million and the revenue goes up by like a hundred and eighteen thousand, then shouldn't the local contribution be like one point eight five million instead of two million forty? I just, I can't figure out how we get to two million forty one thousand. And I, it could totally be me, it's just I don't understand what's adding to two million forty one.
Slide thirty one.
Slide thirty. It's thirty and thirty one, but thirty is where I just can't figure out what adds to two million forty one thousand.
Does Jen know? Yes, she's nodding yes. Jen, can we invite you?
I'm not objecting to it. I'm just helping. I need to be to explain it, you know?
I understand what you're asking, and I'm not.
So the confusion that comes with the three hundred and sixty thousand of variance from last year to this year, that is what was presented to the board last year would be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars difference from what we are presenting this year. If you go look at the ED two seven nine and the actual that we are receiving compared to this year's, because that number has changed versus what's projected for next year, that three sixty is not accurate. It's not that the number isn't accurate. The problem that we have is that if someone were compared this budget presentation from last year to this year and how much the ED two seven nine was, that number right now would not be the same. So what was presented as an ED two seven nine contribution in last year's budget process and what we've actually received in twenty five is not the same number, because the ED two seven, ED two seven nine has constant changes. We've had probably four since I've been here, which is a little bit uncharacteristic. But that's why that math doesn't quite add up and line up in that way. Does that make sense? I know that's a very confusing explanation.
No, I understand that. So on this slide, slide thirty.
Yep, one.
Thirty one.
I'm, I'm, uh, thirty one, yes, at the bottom, I'm sorry. Um, I was looking at the top. Um, so on slide thirty one, that eleven, the the twenty four, twenty five, ED two seventy nine, that is eleven, eight ninety five, four forty six. You're saying that that is not reality.
That is not reality.
Okay.
No, that is not. If you looked up our ED two seven nine right now, like for twenty five, you've gone through four different iterations, that would be a different number. I can't remember, I should say that. I can't remember if the eleven, eight ninety five is the accurate number of that. I believe that's the number that was presented last year. So if you do that comparison from what was presented last year and what we're gonna get this year is the three hundred and sixty. If you go look at our actual ED two seven nine for twenty five, it is not eleven million, eight ninety five.
Okay, so I totally hundred percent understand that explanation.
They put a whole note at the bottom here for me for that.
I was like, you know this.
You know this, yeah, you're right.
So what actually adds up to two million forty one thousand of additional local contribution? Like, which numbers add up to that number?
Are you talking about the fund balance and the miscellaneous revenue? You're adding this to?
Well, so I've got expense, right? Right, we've got the general fund plus the adult ed equals two million dollars in additional expense.
Yep.
Right? And so if we have a two million forty one thousand dollar in additional local contribution, that means the other revenues somewhere went down by forty two grand, right? And so who am I gonna blame for having forty one thousand dollars less?
Yeah, it's the hundred, so I can, that is exactly, that's exactly the adjustment we've had from the ED two seven nine.
So the state hosed us out forty two grand.
Main seed allocation was a hundred and forty three thousand, and then we've had a couple other, couple thousand dollar ones, so that's the variance.
Okay, that's, we didn't, we got forty one thousand dollars less than we thought we were gonna get.
Unfortunately, yep, and that's the main seed for DHS funding that they would do on the half of the district.
That is.
So that is one we normally get, and then we've had a couple other small ones. One, um, Dr. Turner presented about the superintendent's adjustment. That was in our favor, lovely. Um, and then we've had a couple other ones that I think were like two thousand dollars, and so, but that's that net difference.
So when we get to the town meeting, I want to make sure that we can explain that, because people are gonna add up this column, and the column just doesn't add up.
It may make, it may make more sense, and and we've always tried to go projected to projected, but it may make more sense for that twenty four, twenty five, ED two seven nine for us to put the actual number there instead. We can do that. Uh, they might even have recommended, and I was like, we've always done proposed to propose. I don't wanna mess with it, but.
I just know everybody's gonna do the same thing I do, where they add up all those numbers and they're, they don't equal each other.
We can, we can change that to the, to the, what we actually received instead.
Thank you.
Uh, that uh, local contribution number, the two million forty one thousand change, how does that change compared to last year's change?
I don't know the answer to that.
I know I could look it up.
Yeah, I can look it up. Give me a second. It's not committed to my memory.
Right, because I, just to build on that question, people get confused between the increase in our expense budget and then the increase of our local contribution, and why are they not the same? Um, and often that can be a point of much discussion at the town meeting, so we definitely want to make sure we know the answer to that.
So I think the local, if I'm looking at this very quickly, last year's presentation correctly, the increase in the local share of the budget was one million, two hundred sixty three thousand, six hundred ten dollars. Anyone else wanna confirm or deny?
Twenty.
So two point two million you said?
Oh, I got the wrong gear. Right? Twenty four, twenty five.
It would be the May sixteenth twenty four budget overview for the current school year.
It shows one point three million for Gray and
Oh, oh, oh.
Six hundred and sixty for New Gloucester, one point nine six five.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
One point nine makes more sense, because that's pretty close.
Oh, this, that first slide doesn't include. Okay, sorry.
So it's a very similar increase.
Uh, any other questions? They can continue, but we'll let Chanda come join us again if there's no more
Yeah.
specific presentation.
I have one on 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 the food. Um, so you went back to the salads and all that. How's that being paid again?
So the um, so the USDA has, uh, the school oversees the U, this, mm-hmm. Try that again. USDA oversees the school nutrition program. That school nutrition program dictates um a certain set of rules by which if you follow them, then you will get reimbursed at a certain rate per student. Um, and it's essentially for a meal, and a meal has a very specific definition. So any student coming through, um, a- and then there's a free and reduced lunch piece that comes around. How much you get reimbursed for a student who's um qualifies for free is different than what you get for reduced. But essentially, um, we are then documenting those official meals, and those then get reimbursed at the rate that is in um the agreement. That's where part of the funding comes. The rest of the funding is from self-pay. So a student who comes through, um, and and we don't allow this at elementary school, but at the high school, for example, and they just wanna buy a bag of chips, they have to pay for that. Um, that's not necessarily reimbursed. That's not a meal. Um, so the, where the money comes from for school nutrition in general is either um from the students or the staff, staff are welcome also, who are um paying for it, and then also reimbursement from the USDA. Something I didn't mention when I was, um, when we were talking about that, is they do have their own fund, and they do carry their own balance. As of right now, we are carrying a small balance. So if if reimbursement were to be cut off, we'd, we'd be okay for a little while, because we do have a little bit of a cushion there at the moment.
So that's not in the budget?
That is not part of the budget. Nope. No, that is a self-funded program. We have had to supplement the program in years past. Um, I could go back and get specifics. I wanna say it was during COVID or right?
Well, yeah, so we, um, it was self-sustaining. And then you'll remember, we had, um, the legislature passed a law that said you could not ask students about their balance. Um, and after that law passed, we quickly went into the red with our new nutrition program, and we were about twenty thousand dollars a year in arrears. Uh, so we did have to start contributing money from the general fund to nutrition. We did twenty thousand dollars a year for three budgets. And then COVID actually brought us back to the black, because uh they uh they covered all kids' meals federally during COVID. And then the main state legislature passed a law that said they would cover it, although it's all in the ED two seventy nine. It's kind of hand waving, look, and we cover it.
Yeah.
Um, but um, since then, we've been reimbursable, and we're back to a self-sustaining.
We're back to self-sustaining, yes. Thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
Um, not sure if this is really a question or comment. Uh, but the, we talked about this in um facilities, the air quality bond payment. Taking the two hundred and seventy five thousand and adding to that for the bond payment to help soften it, I understand. I guess, and I can't remember correctly, but when we proposed the bond project to the town that they voted on, or to the taxpayers, they voted, they voted to pay for that project, correct? In fully, not without any, without using anything out of our general fund, correct? Because we didn't propose that when we set that across. And I understand the the thought behind this to help soften that, which is obviously gonna help soften the budget this year. I guess my only concern is, is that to me, it's, it's a little deceiving, um, because they already voted. Now, obviously, we have the opportunity to pay for how we need to. I guess, I guess I do have a little bit of a question is, if we took that two hundred and seventy five thousand and applied that somewhere else in our budget, would that give us any more increase percentage-wise than this?
Yes, we'd, we'd be back to six point seven six percent increase. Six, do I have that number right? No, what was the number before? Six point?
Well, if we put that money towards anything expense-wise in the budget, it will be back.
Just a wash.
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, 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 I didn't understand your question. Sorry.
I just wanted to know percentage, okay.
Okay, I understand. So you're saying take, okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, yeah. I guess if it's laid out there like this and people vote for it, then fine, because they're voting on it twice, but.
Yeah, I see your point.
It would have to be towards a capital project, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have to take it out of our facilities.
Yeah, I think it, I think it actually would impact that budget number, because if we said, no, we're not gonna pay for the bond, we're gonna, this is a big debate at facilities and a big debate at finance. If we say yes, the town voted to pay for it, they need to pay for it. The budget would, the, that number would increase.
Because the project wouldn't show up as an expense or allocated fund as a break.
In facilities, little, facilities had recommend, you know, to kick, talked about the five hundred thousand and doing part in part. And facility, uh, finance, the debate was folks saying, no, we don't wanna do that. And the compromise was, well, then let's just move a little bit more out of capital reserve. So we're not gonna skip on the facilities improvements, and we're still gonna cover a little bit of the bond to get us going and to try to get that increase under six percent. That was sort of the, the working compromise. Am I, am I representing?
Good encapsulation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By moving two hundred and seventy five thousand out into capital reserve, um, that still leaves a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and five. That's part of that increase to the local expense, so it is still partially in there.
Because that foreign sliver would be bigger, if that two seventy five.
Little sliver would be bigger, if we hadn't taken out that two seventy five.
Because we can't move money out of the capital reserve to just put in the general fund. It has to be applied to a specific capital project.
How did we move the one point five million last year into the revenue?
That wasn't capital reserve.
That's a fund balance.
Or we got the fund balance, the extra money raised that we didn't need.
Yeah, so it doesn't go in the budget, but it it reduces the tax bill.
It shows up as revenue.
It shows up as revenue.
Revenue, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was the number that this year is recommended at one point two five. Um, Chanda, feel free to set if you'd like.
Are we moving into discussion now?
One more question.
Discussion? One more clarifying question?
One more clarifying question about the federal funds. Uh, as you mentioned, you alluded to that, I guess it was uh SAD seventy, which is Hodgson, just south of Holton, voted to kind of uh go with the federal interpretation. And you said that doesn't really matter to us, because uh monies are through the, through the state.
It does not change their ability to access federal funds. If they, if they were to change some laws, if they would change the, if the, what I believe to be true is if they were to change um, the procedures and rules of the Department of Education to fund districts directly, then it could, um, they would have to have the staffing to monitor, receive, and make those payments.
Okay, I just was wondering if they decide to, that, I just wanna know, could it, even though it isn't, it doesn't affect things now, could it, could they change things in a month? Or?
They could change things before I go to bed tonight, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
And I will make sure I keep you all very up to date on what changes and when, and if there are things we can do to, you know, to uh, address our funding, then I will definitely keep you apprised to that. But at this time, there, there is no action to be had.
Um, so rather than. Um, so rather than I'm just thinking through, do we look for a motion and then discuss, but i- if folks want to have broad discussion on things that may touch either proposed motion, does it make more sense to have a discussion generally?
I think if we're, in my opinion, if we're going to be talking about, like, adjusting the budget number, we should do that in the motion discussion.
Great.
So let's.
Because then we can make, um, we can amend the motion down to a lower number if that's our proposal, you know, rather than try to figure out a lower number first, you know?
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Um, so would you love to make a motion?
I moved that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school budget proposal in the amount of thirty-five million, four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars for public ratification.
Second. All right, uh, discussion? This is our, one of our primary responsibilities, so I'm going to force it then and just go to Fran. You can start, perfect.
Okay. So, um, I guess, how much on June thirtieth of this past year was there left that had not been spent? Nothing was left?
We.
It's not a number that would count to?
This is part of that draft audit situation. Until we have an audit, we don't have a number that we can commit to.
General number.
We can call it draft.
Right, so we don't, um, we should have our audit, uh, probably this month, by May thirty-first at the latest, and that's when we will know our fund balances for sure. We don't, as a practice, uh, we don't have a report that compares our total spending to our budget for the end of the year last year. But those numbers will be built into our fund balance what we, when we get that from the auditor.
And essentially, it's that draft-assigned number.
Yeah.
That two million, one hundred nine thousand, six hundred sixty. And that represented the one point five million that was set aside, and then the remaining expenses for June, that hadn't been paid as of June thirtieth.
Is the, are you telling me the audits will make adjustments to the books, basically, in cleaning?
No, they, they may have recommended adjustments for us to make, but we would make the adjustments.
Right. What kind of adjustments would they make, but in audit?
I'd, I'd have, I don't have examples with me right now, but.
I don't think I've ever heard of that. So is that something unique to?
They might recommend that we reclass money from one account to another account, something like that. I don't know that they have in the past, but that's an example of something that they might do.
Um, I guess I'm going to have a comment then, because how can we vote in a new budget if we don't know how much we spent on the last budget that we had on June thirtieth? How much money was left over? Because that money gives us a handle on how much we should not have to raise this year. I'll give you an example. Thirty-one million, two seventy-six, I gave this to the finance, but I'll give it to the whole board. Thirty-one, two, two seventy-six, uh, six was the budget for twenty-three to twenty-four. Three quarters of the way through the year, we spent twenty-one, six fifty-seven. So I'm going to compare apples with apples. June, uh, ju- um, June, well, I'm due in July, but, uh, twenty-fifth, this past year, our budget was thirty-three point three oh four. Three quarters of the way through, we have spent twenty-three, five ninety-seven. We have spent the same amount of money at the same time, and yet we increased our budget by two million dollars. So I would expect to see that we spent, um, twenty-five million by now. You see my point?
No, Fran, can you read those two numbers again? Because
Sure.
the three-quarter one, it sounded like they were two million different.
Yeah.
Um, uh, remaining, this one million, um, the difference, right. So thirty-one minus twenty-one that we spent. So that left nine million roughly.
But we had spent twenty-one million about three quarters of the way through last year.
No, twenty-three.
Right. And then what was last year?
Yeah, what was last year?
Yeah.
What was it?
Um, what we spent?
Yeah.
Twenty-three.
So we spent two million dollars more three quarters of the way through the year.
But we have still remaining nine million both times, both years.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Because we spent two more million, which we budgeted two more million, so it sounds like we did a good job.
So we're outlining, we're on linement, and then, um, how much of this will be left over for both years? You're telling me we're going to spend almost ten million dollars in three months? Is that how that works?
Year end.
Two-year experience, is it like ten million in three months? I'm trying to find out how much we have left over last year's bottom line.
Right, we can't know that tonight because we don't have our final.
We have a draft number. Our draft number on that is our draft unassigned. It is our best guess at how much we thought we had left over, which is two point three two nine million dollars. Right? So we don't have that audited number. That's our draft best guess without the audited number.
Two point three million?
Two point three million.
On slide twenty-seven.
Right. And so that's why we have, the facilities committee made the recommendation to roll over one point two five million, which leaves us with, you know, roughly one point two five million left over.
Yeah.
Which covers one payroll and a half, and is under the five percent rule. Right? Last year, we felt more confident. We voted to roll over one point five million, right? Um, I wi- I wish Diane was here in some ways because she was hectoring us that after a few years of running in the black because of some COVID money and some really, really conservative budgeting, last year, she was throwing up flags in every finance committee meeting that we were basically running right on budget, so that we were unlikely to increase that unassigned fund. And, you know, it seems as though that is what happened, because if we roll over, if we only have one point two five left, that is less than five percent of our budget. If we are under the legal allowance, that's a pretty small number when you look at our payroll number.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's one payroll and a loss of our title funds. We've gone.
Right. Right. And so I would like to build on that. And I, I actually, this is the most difficult budget season I can remember in ten years because we have so much uncertainty. You know, I think we, as a district, have been very frugal. You can see that in our per-student spending. You can see it in the way that we've maintained our facilities. Uh, we've been, um, you know, we've kept that healthy budget, beca- healthy, unassigned balance because the legislature said we could go up to nine percent. So we held on to more because we could, and, you know, we felt that was smart. Last time we talked about this, I felt like, you know, it's time to change that posture and to, you know, return more money to the taxpayers. And I, I recommended that we go to one point two five million. But if something happens and we lose reimbursement from the USDA for our nutrition program, and all of a sudden we need three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make sure our poorest kids eat lunch, where do we get that money? If all of a sudden we lose all of our title money, and, uh, we don't have anything to pay the ed techs and employees that are funded by that money, where does that money come from? Um, so I have a hard time dwindling down that unassigned balance when it's very possible that we have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense for lunches next year that we didn't see coming. Um, and I just, I think now is the time. I just, I never even, I, it did not occur to me that there might be an op, might be a possibility that the US government would say, I'm sorry, the money that we've told you that you can have, you can't have. That was not something that I thought was a possible thing. But now it's clearly a possible thing. And I think, uh, our duty is to make sure that we take care of our kids and our staff, and if we put ourselves in a thin, unassigned balance situation where all of a su- we can't raise any more money. We get one chance to raise money.
Well, we could go back.
We could go ask for more.
Well, it's true.
But I'm just saying, I, I, I don't know if I do support the one point two five rollover anymore. I'm scared.
Uh, I will say for those who weren't at the, in fairness to those who were not in the finance committee meeting into our hard-working central office, uh, they brought forward three examples. One million, they were very comfortable with. One point two five, if you twist our arm, we can get through it. One point five, totally off the table. So in service to the conversation we've been having and hearing at town meetings about not, you know, over, you know, sitting on money overly so or turning it to the taxpayer, we were really trying to act in the spirit of being as aggressive as possible to that end. And now, you know, to your point, Sam, one week later, and I'm thinking, wow, we really might need that quarter million dollars if we get. So that was the conversation at the committee, um, last week. And, and, and a change in that recommendation would not change the budget.
No, it just changes the revenue.
It would change the lo- the revenue.
That, yeah, I, I, it's just, I don't know, I think now is the time to hoard.
I like it the way it is.
Fran, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, um, sometimes you have to be preemptive if you're not sure what's the future going to hold. So looking at the actual expenses, whether I'm looking at teachers and staff, you know, at staffing, whether it's, uh, bus garage or wherever, um, we have, I was looking for my number on the, um, library. We spend an awful lot of money on library, um, expense. And, um, if we cut, because of the changes, uh, as I mentioned at the, uh, workshop, the changes in using techal- technology so much more today, the original uses of libraries are decreasing, you know, because they have other resources to use. And yet the budget keeps on going up for the library, and I'm thinking that, you know, if some of that was cut, that would help offset and, you know, have additional funds for repairs and, and, and things of that nature, um, that, that are critically needed. Um, so there's, uh, a few departments like that, that, again, we can, you know, we should be looking at. Same thing with board, we have a very hefty board contingency line. If we kind of, um, decrease some of that, I'm looking at more of a decrease in, um, in helping be preemptive. So, um, I'm in favor of, uh, decreasing. And we have additional revenue too, by the way, that anyone's mentioned, additional two hundred and twenty-two thousand so far to date, that, um, you know, that's extra money this year. And, um, that'll be used for next year. So I don't see, um, I can see some areas that can be decreased and not have a two million dollar increase. And so that's basically what I look like. I think I originally had mentioned too, that using some of the money to offset the bond. I think I agree with the comment that, um, taxpayers expected to pay for it in that one year. Maybe we shouldn't do that, um, to stay on schedule, because next year the impact could be even far greater. If we're going to increase our budget every year by two million dollars, and our salaries are eight hundred, um, it would not, our salaries will not be going up that much. Um, you know, we have to see what other areas we can look at to make decreases. We just seem to accept, um, you know, it's like paying, uh, Cadillac prices when you can probably buy a Ford. In some ca- I, you know, it's a bad example, but, you know, what I'm trying to get at, you know, um, so, um, I'm in favor of decreasing. I, I.
We are in discussion on a motion for a budget proposal in the amount of thirty-five million, four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixteen. Do I hear an amended motion?
Yes, I just, sorry, uh, well, I didn't know if we were all done discussing or.
We are not done discussing.
Yeah, go ahead and finish discussing, then I'll make another motion.
Let's go down, like I said, we're, I think obligated to our audience, whether they're here or not, to go on the record here with this big part of our job. Misty?
Um, I'm okay with the budget. Um, I agree with Sam on penny-pinching because of the uncertainty this year. We've never been faced with this before, and I'd rather be safe than sorry. Um, and then as far as the two seventy-five, um, when we left facilities, I know that finance changed it, and that's, that's fine. That's, that's the role of the two committees. But we, we had talked about, um, the two seventy-five, as Fran just said, that, you know, that's what taxpayers paid for. Um, we have, and that's what I, that's what I think should happen, um, because we've been neglecting, not neglecting, but we've been cutting, like, during COVID, we had zero increases, one percent increases, that we, we really made a cut to a lot of things that we, um, we band-aided a lot of stuff. So that two seventy-five could, should really, really go to what it's meant for, um, and it should go to capital, um, in my opinion.
So that, just to be clear, on the motion on this number, that would be, essentially, you would be making an amendment to increase the budget by two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, right? Because.
Yeah, that's what she's saying. Yeah.
But I'm just one person, so.
Lauren?
I'm in, I'm in favor of what's being proposed tonight. I feel like we have done our due diligence and, and pushed the limits and had rigorous conversations in especially, um, well, I know on facilities, but also on finance.
Gary, do you have one, take another bite at this?
Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm s- I understand Sam's point. And I understand the point, uh, Fran's point about letting the town, you know, make the payment. At the same time, I want to get a budget passed. I'm concerned about if budget creeps up past that magic six, gets out of the fives. And also, either the town can either pay, pay the payment of, for the bond, or we can go back at them if we get federal funding cut and ask for an increase. I think I'd rather be optimistic and stay with as proposed. I think it's already been cut, cut pretty close to the bone. And, uh, I get, I guess I'd stand with the proposal as it is.
Yeah, I would, I would support how it was presented.
Um, I agree. I agree with the budget as it's been proposed. I've gone round and round on all the different arguments and what we could do, and there's pros and cons to everything. Um, at this point, I just feel like we have to do the best we can, and so I agree with what's been proposed.
I, I agree with my two, uh, three predecessors in that, uh, I, I think this budget has a chance of passing. If we could increase it anymore, it, it doesn't, in my humble opinion. So, I mean, you can, uh, and I do, I do, uh, sympathize and think Fran makes a good point about library services. Uh, I don't think there is much of a, uh, as much of a role as there used to, and it could be an area that, uh, if something happens, or if we don't, looking forward, that it might not be as much of a, uh, a role in our budget as it has been traditionally. I mean, I don't go to the library very often anymore. Uh, I, I have other places that I get information. So, uh, I'm, I'm for the budget as it's presented. I think that compromise we did with the, uh, with the bond was, was a, was prudent and helped to compromise, helped, you know, create the, uh, the situation where we can present a budget that's going to pass.
Yeah, I think, uh, in terms of the number that's in the motion, I support it. I just don't, you know, I was, I had aspirations for it to be lower. The health insurance number really, you know, took any wiggle room out of that in a major way. Universal healthcare for the win. Um, I, um, yeah, um, I support this number.
I also support this number. Lauren pretty much summed up what I would have said. I think we've really gone round and round. We have done our due diligence. I think we've whittled things away to where they can be whittled, and I'm happy with this number.
Where? I meant one sec. No, I'm going to take my turn, uh, which is to be quite repetitive. Um, I think folks have worked really hard on this. Um, I want to thank everyone for the efforts that were put into this in this room, on all the committees, in central office. Um, I feel like this end number has a lot of compromise in it. Um, I don't think it's. Um, I don't think it's perfect, um, by anyone's measure, which means it's probably pretty darn close to as tight as we can get. Um, I also want us to be prepared to support what we pass in this community. Um, this is one of the things that we do, and we're, uh, representing the kids in our district and also what we think our town can tolerate. Um, and then part of our work is to get out there and make sure folks understand this, um, and pass this budget. So, um, just want to be mindful when, when we vote for it, that that's what we're committing to doing. Um, Misty?
The transfer of the one versus 1.25 to, where does that change? If we were to make that change, that doesn't affect the budget number?
No.
It only affects the tax impact.
Right, so when does, if we vote to change that number that finance voted on, when would that happen?
That is not on the agenda right now.
It'll happen when we approve the warrants, uh, at our Feb- our May meeting. So, once we approve this number, then that allows David to prepare the warrants, and then we'll get the warrants in front of us, and that's when we'd have an opportunity to adjust the rollover and that sort of thing.
Okay, great.
Uh, historically, that's gone on recommendation out of the finance committee, and we didn't vote on it as a full board, other than...
It will come up in the warrants.
It'll come up in the warrants.
Okay, great.
Um, anything else on this, um, motion on the table or amendments proposed? All right, all in favor? Maggie, did you get us, uh, any, uh, wait, so that... Did you get the favors? In favors, okay, opposed. All right. Thank you for that, so moving on, we have another one, Gary?
I'd like to propose, including in warrant article eighteen, the expenditure of up to $800,000 from the existing capital reserve fund to pay the cost of capital projects, air quality bond payments, and ongoing architectural and engineering studies.
Second.
Discussion on that, I know we've touched on this, uh, a fair amount, but in the formal spot where it belongs? Fran?
Uh, could you explain the architectural and others?
We were just, we included, as in the description, um, areas that we might need to use it. If we were decided, in the additional monies, if we decided to do some work in the cafeteria, or the theater, or locker rooms, or anyplace, we might need some additional dollars to have some help with engineering or architectural. So we wanted to make sure that we, we mentioned that in the narrative, so that we didn't have to have a discussion again later about appropriateness.
So by understanding, there's leftover money from the last bond attempt, and has that come into any consideration?
I do not believe there's any leftover.
I was...
David's shaking his head, so we've, we've expended that at this point.
When, because the last was 20,000 left? You know, um, I've been trying to get the breakdown of that hundred thousand dollars. I've asked four times, and I'm not getting it. It's very difficult to get a handle on things when you don't get your information.
We provided that in the...
Last time, it was 20,000 that was left. I have it in writing.
Uh, we provided that in the parking lot questions for the April ninth meeting. It is the last question with all of the details.
So it had what was spent out, Fran, and then it also had invoices pending, which added up to the full total of what was allocated, which was also from last year's budget, not this.
That's not last year's allocation.
Last year's allocation.
Yes, this year remained 20,000.
But then you say where it says...
Of the covered invoices that we've received, but we have not got payment for yet, as of the writing of this.
So we'd be double paying for studies?
No, absolutely not.
Because we've done the architectural already, right?
Fran, so it's just boilerplate language, so say we wanted to go ahead and do, um, renovate a locker room. You may be required to have permitting, you may be required to have drawings. That's not something you necessarily can have a contractor come in and just start throwing up new... So, so the wording is to say this money could be used for the project itself, for air quality payments, or required, you know, essentially paperwork that goes with such a project. It is not saying we're going to redo or undertake additional drawings that we did with the bond work last year.
To the degree that what we have, we could use, believe me, I will use it. But the scope of the projects on those proposed work is not such that what is being allocated would be able to accomplish. So we would likely potentially need some additional help. We just want to make sure we have our options, so that we can accomplish what we've said we were going to accomplish.
And we have an estimated cost of the improvements we'd like to do? Is, is that what we have?
Yeah.
We've been discussing that at facilities, yeah.
Facilities.
Yeah, you could see it in the facilities folder from last week, last meeting. There's a, a grid that shows the 512,000 worth of work in that sort of necessary invisible, you know, paving, asbestos tiles, et cetera.
And architectural and engineering fees are generally 5% to 10% of construction cost for any project. So, I mean, you're always going to have to pay your engineer and architect for something.
Yeah, we're just trying to be transparent in, in the language. Okay.
We're always getting that cut.
I think I'm asking typical questions that the public would ask.
Yeah, I think that's a perfectly good question. Anybody else have good questions, or have you entertained bad questions? You can ask them all. Opinions? No? All right, um, all in favor? And any opposed? Great work. Um, that's it?
That's it.
And we're done?
Move to your turn.
Uh, we will adjourn and then, uh, take this up at our town, uh...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, uh, which, by the way, is not a Wednesday.
It is a Thursday.
Thursday.
We still do have to vote on the warrant articles when they're presented to us.
Uh, May seventh, yes, you're right.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
What we're going to do is approving a number that allows the warrants to be prepared. Just to have another bite at the application.
You're right, you're right.
I just wanted to let Sam correct me. Um, so yes, we'll come back in the day...
Just making sure everybody understands the process.
We'll come back in May seventh, and then we'll come to the town...
And that's where we're at the done school, May seventh.
Anybody else for answers? Thank you, everybody.